Dear Lord, tonight we come before you not with prayers for our wants and needs, but with a list of many things we are thankful for. So many blessings have been bestowed upon us. Please continue to help us find harmonic solutions, to be patient and kind to one another, and to remember that you are always with us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is oath of office. If you come forward when I call your names, so our attorney, Michael Kendry, can swear you in. Nicholas Ober, Corinne McDonald, Rosalyn Harps, Brian Musgrove, Marla Dykes, Sylvia Berry, Pen St. Sina? Did I say that correctly? No, she's not here. Okay, anyway.
Wow.
So there's nothing on the list, right?
Right.
After our ministry oath, council typically like to shake your hand and say a few words to you to approach after. If you depraise the right hand or repeat after me, I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been appointed
Which I've been appointed.
And I will
And I will.
Invest my ability
Invest my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So how we go.
Since you were the warden, we figured we better.
Thank you, sir.
Nick?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
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 Thank you for serving.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the service.
Johnson, Brian Musgrove?
I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
She looks hungry, maybe.
It was her first taste of service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
She was just missing.
I know.
Well, how many by the audience y'all over there?
Oh, so why? Oh, it got on the list prematurely.
No, it's a different.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's your department. Okay, no one signed up for appearances, and nobody signed up for the public forum, so we have the consent agenda. I'm gonna pull two items from the consent agenda, cause as you know, consent agenda's supposed to be unanimous. So I'm gonna pull out number seven and number sixteen for discussion. And I guess number seven, sixteen would go under old business, cause we dealt with moving forward on that at the August meeting. And seven, I guess, would be new business. Would that be correct? Okay, I got the nod. So we'll have seven as the first order under new business, and sixteen is the first item under old business. So with those removed, do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, well, so old business would be the... Hang on one second, got a lot of papers here. Let me get to it. Counsel to consider approval of the cultural and heritage museum contract with JMD Architects in the amount of $375,000 plus $6,000 in allowances for purposes of providing architectural, engineering, exhibition design, and project management services, and the design and renovation of the existing exhibit hall at the Museum of York County. And Carrie, I saw you out there. Did you wanna, did you wanna say anything before we?
Yes, I...
Or actually, I guess we could have a motion first.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Subject to discussion.
Subject to final approval by the county attorney.
Thank you, sir. And then you second it?
Sure.
Okay.
What this is, is I've been up here to talk about the new exhibit at the Museum of York County several times. It's been an initiative of the commission since 2012, and I think with all the discussion, a lot of y'all, or all of y'all know that we're not able to build the new museum on the river that had been talked about for so long. But we can make the museum we've got better, and this is part of that plan. So this is the first step. We've gotten a grant through the Foundation for the Carolinas for the money to cover this, and the money's sitting there. And so this is just for the design for the exhibit, and also the modifications to the exhibit hall, mechanical systems, lighting, things like that, that maybe we need to work on a ramp, or something like that. So it's, it's something we're excited about. It'll be a new exhibit, it's more mission-oriented, focused on the Ice Age in the Carolina Piedmont, and we're able to show what kind of life was here back in the last ice age. So we're excited about this project. It's ready to move forward. We've been getting it ready for years. We've been, been working on it, and excited to move forward with this team of JMD Architects and Taylor Studios. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about it.
Questions for Mr. Teely? Sorry. None?
Michael just reminded me, the funding is from the Foundation for the Carolinas money that we talked about. So it's out of that money, so it's restricted for capital projects of the museum system only, and it can't be used for anything else. So it's a grant from the Foundation for Carolinas.
Ms. Cox?
I'm curious. You said the project was approved and endorsed by the Culture and Heritage Commission. Was there any, was it unanimous?
I believe so, yeah. It's, it's in our institutional plan. It's, it's come up a couple of different times. I think there was one vote that maybe, where there was a dissenting vote, but I can't remember the exact, the last vote was unanimous.
Any other?
Do we have minutes? We don't ever get to see minutes as counsel.
I'll be, we post them on our website. I'll be glad to share them with you if you wanna. I'd have to look exactly which meeting that was. It's been a while.
Any other comments, questions? The reason I pulled, well, in addition to Mr. Kendry pointing out to me, he asked you to be here, was I battled with this all weekend. Because, and of course, I voted gleefully for the approval of moving forward with this in August. And I've been a tremendous proponent of the museum, ever since the days when we had the issues that I fought to kinda help clean up, and I had to get a lot of scars from that. But when the issue came up about the Civil War reenactment, which was, you know, you even said in your press release, "The military reenactments are an effective tool," and when you and I have talked about this, and I talk, you don't have to stand there to listen to me, I'm just gonna say my piece, and we're voting, we'll move on.
Okay.
But you can sit out there, and I talked to two of your board members, too, just expressing concerns about it, because I felt like, to be blunt, political correctness, mob mentality was winning out over an historical reenactment, that's per your mission statement, is important, and your vision statement. And I just felt like, you know, it's just the wrong attitude to have, and it gets you off what you're there for, to let kids learn. And I know the two things that were told to me were security for the public, and plus there was not a Civil War battle in York County. Of course, there were skirmishes all over South Carolina. Civil War started here, it's part of our heritage, it's part of our history. So I just felt like, you know, they're getting off their mission statement, they're getting away from education. In this case, they became kind of a politically correct organization, and I just couldn't overcome it this, this weekend, so for that reason, I'm not gonna support it. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. And forgive me with all the papers of consent agenda paperwork. Yeah, I was kinda, got off track there. Actually, okay, so we're still under old business, so consider second reading of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-three of the York County Code of Ordinances, personnel by amending and clarifying the codified York County Personnel Policies addressing nepotism, section thirty-three point oh four five, substance and abuse, section thirty-three point oh nine five, and vehicles, section thirty-three point eleven, and to provide for other minors related there, too.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I got one question, and I understand the logic, but let me just try to totally understand this. So if Michael's son, who's getting ready to start that college, what college is it?
It'd be Auburn, you know.
Auburn. And he gets an engineering degree, and he gets an opportunity to come to York County to be a head engineer in York County. Does that mean he cannot come here because his dad was serving on the county council?
Well, that is based, if his dad's in a lot of our county... That's not an issue. It's more in line with someone like me that could affect his salary, or his career, or those sort of things. I'm trying to remember what I've read. I don't think it affects the council that way, or am I wrong in that? It's more on...
The county members are employing you.
Yeah, it's me employing somebody. I mean, cause they would not be working for you, they would be working for me.
So how about if a woman working in the tax assessor's office, and her son wants to work in, you know, zoning engineer, or whatever, does that mean he cannot apply to the county? Even if he's highly qualified?
He would be able to work in the zoning side. He would not be able to be in the taxes that's underneath.
He just couldn't go to her side. So he couldn't go to that department, but he would be, so family members with employees can apply if it's not in their department?
Yeah, but even like, but like, and the more you move up, like me, nobody in my family can come work for the county.
Well, yeah, because you'd be over everything. Yeah, that makes sense. And then with the council person's brother, son, daughter, whatever, did you say they could, or they couldn't work for the county?
They should.
I don't see an issue with that. Now, if the, if the council was making a recommendation that directly affected that individual, it may be salary for the whole, the whole county,
Step aside.
Then he or she would be better to step outside.
I mean, I didn't have any burning issue with this, but as I read it over the weekend, I just thought, wow, if I was an employee of the county, and I had a son that graduated from, has an engineering degree from Clemson, or whatever, he can't apply to work for the zoning department? Okay, you answering my question?
I guess that means if, if we ever replace the three of y'all, we can't do it with any of our family members, because y'all are the three that we hired, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, four.
So.
That'd technically be me, too, yeah.
Finance, what I'm saying, yeah. The three of y'all, well, four, excuse me. This whole side of the room over here, so, yeah.
Say that one more time, Robert.
Can't be related to the four.
Anybody that the council directly hires, we could not hire a family member for them, because they would be working directly, so like Bill Shanahan. We could never hire one of our relatives to be the county manager.
Because you would have direct...
We would never do that to a relative.
That's the only way that a county, that council would have a nepotism conflict, in my opinion, if we were hired. Is it right there?
Yeah, I, I just, I wasn't having an issue with it, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure I had it clear in my head. Question, sir?
Yeah, I say that the sad thing about nepotism, though, is throughout history, when you have firemen and policemen, they're normally families, and their family traditions.
Right.
That makes it a lot more difficult than...
Mr. Roddy?
You know, we had, we had some discussion a couple of years back, that we don't have a statute on the county level that prevents a county council member actually working for the county. The city has a policy that if you're an elected official, you can't work for the city. And I know we don't have, we don't have that, cause I, I remember asking the questions, could I apply for a county job? And at the time, unless we've made some changes I didn't know about, I could apply for a county position and technically still be hired for that. I don't know, is that still the way it is now? It's not, it's not on course for what we're talking about with...
There's a master-servant issue, that you can't really work for the one you serve, and so then the law, that's in addition to the ethical considerations, there's a, that is deemed a master-servant relationship, and you have to look at the facts of the particular application. So there could be, very well be a prohibition on councilmen working for the county.
How about if they resigned from their position to work for the county?
That would be fine.
Yeah. So as long as they resign their position, that'd be okay?
Yes, sir.
Could they apply as a councilman? I mean, I don't have any plans to do that.
I'm starting, I wonder why you're asking all these things.
Bump's got me started now, but, I mean, could, could a councilman...
You don't have any eye doctors working for the county.
Could, could, could a councilman apply for it, and then if he gets it, resign? Or if he applied, he'd have, I'm sorry for the, I don't mean to get carried away, but would he have to resign before he applied?
Yeah, I would have to look, because I've got some, I've been reading, yeah, I read the personnel policy every so often when there's nothing else to do, I guess. But, and there are some issues in there, but I, I'm not sure what I'm thinking of is in Georgia, or if it's in South Carolina. So I would have to look, but we do have something in our policy now, cause I remember reading it, but it might just be, it might just be, you know, if you have...
I think I know when you looked it up.
When you have, when you have a business, and, you know, you're a county council person, and you wanna do business. You know, most places I've been, York, France, and that, most places I've been, as long as you make it public and you go through the bidding process, nobody really cares.
Well, here again, I wanna stress, I mean, I know the county doesn't need an eye doctor, so it wasn't for me, but I mean, for, for that question, it just made me start thinking of other questions.
Are you hiring lawyers? There are two of us up here, we're making a work.
That's an appropriate question.
It was the Clemson graduate comment that bothered me a little bit.
Did that come out of my mouth?
You said as an example, not really on the subject.
Yeah, that was an example. Although I am a Clemson graduate.
I'm not sure you would hire Clemson graduate.
Oh, gosh.
You must not have a lot on the agenda for...
We don't, but I appreciate you telling us to get refocused.
It's been over already, but apparently nobody wants to do that.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, South Carolina, disposal of waste at county landfill, chapter thirty-three, section fifty-oh-two, fifty-thirty-three, and B and D, and to add sections fifty-point-three-three E and F, in order to define unsecured load, to set fees for transporta, transporting unsecured loads to the landfill, to clarify fee exemptions for individual York County residents, to add fees and requirements for solid waste credit accounts, and to provide for other minors related there, too.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion.
I have it.
Yes, Ms. Cox?
I'll pose questions. Just clarification, since I've gotten a couple of calls on this. This particular ordinance is not intended to and is not changing T, fees and tipping costs, is that correct?
No, we're not, at this time, increasing any tipping fees.
Okay.
We do have an RFQ out that we're evaluating, and we will be doing a study in the next few months on how our fees relate.
And that'll come back to council if we're gonna change that.
That'll come back to council, yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you.
And what was it, again, I read in there about if you're arrested in York County, that there's no...
We're better defining exemptions to fees when you're arrested in York County. It's been pretty vague in the past, and we're just trying to establish some conditions there, some guidelines for our staff to go by when folks...
But the unsecured, unsecured load fee would still apply to a York County resident?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we gonna do some education on just our homeowners that are hauling stuff?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, the consent agenda item, council to consider award regarding the purchase of furniture for the newly located Fort Mill magistrate's office to the American Pen and Panel of Rock Hill State Contract for a total cost of $44,689.84.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Here again, I just, David?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're pretty much bound by the, cause we're gonna be looking at a lot of this now, over the next eighteen months.
We are.
Are we bound by some state code that you just put it out for bid, and you just gotta take the lowest bid?
What we will do is, is we, we basically got, after this, we've got four projects that will be in the pipeline, the new family court, the heckle renovation is one, the Moss Justice Center, the new construction and renovations there, Public Works, new, new construction and renovations there also, and then the government center here. We formed a committee that, and we're already kicking off, we'll, we'll be meeting in the next couple of weeks with this committee. We'll start identifying all of our furniture needs at that point, and there'll be a member purchasing on that team also, and what our plans are, is to go ahead and get all this furniture out for bid, identify it and out for bid, whether that's through one bid document or through numerous, we'll, we'll make that decision, what's in the best, best interest of the county. And our goal is to have that ready to roll mid, mid-year of 2018. We'll start needing furniture in, in the latter stages of 2018, and then the first quarter of 2019.
And, you know, this, this is great, this is a local company, it's a very honorable company, and I'm sure they put out bids to come, their bid, to their suppliers. But I mean, I just remember what we went through with the chairs up here, and it was like, close to two thousand a chair, and then I found at Office Depot, a hundred and fifty dollar chair we're sitting in, and then I'm seeing vinyl sofa selling for twelve, fifteen hundred dollars, and a little square table, like, whatever I saw, six hundred dollars or something, I was, thank you for sending that to me.
What we are trying to do is identify commercial furniture that will hold up in that facility over there, and we do, we do have a larger lobby, which we've never had at the Fort Mill magistrate's court, so there'll be a waiting area there for folks as they come into the court, so they try to identify furniture for that area.
Well, and I was...
If these chairs were in the 911 center, they would be, they would be broken and sitting on the floor by now.
Really?
It's getting used twice a month for a couple, three hours.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Few more times, so it's, it is a difference. That was one of the things that was hard for me to swallow early on, but that's just the nature of the...
Okay, right, but the bottom line is, you put it out for bid, and you have to take the low bid, right?
Yeah, that's not what happened this town, which is, but...
We're actually pressing the State Contract.
Okay. Any other questions? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider approval to enter into a financial participation agreement totaling twelve million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty-two dollars, twenty-four cents, with the South Carolina Department of Transportation for improvements to Gold Hill Road, I-77 interchange, Penny's Project eleven, one forty-nine dash zero zero seven, and to approve the transfer of funds necessary to complete this agreement.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Yeah, I'm sorry, I saw Bump stand first. Mr. Roddy?
Looking over these, this request, it kinda brings up some bad feelings of what I've been experiencing with the, with the whole Penny situation, with my project, or District Four's project, always being on the very end of it, always coming up short. And here again, even though we know this project on seventy-two is gonna come up short, we're robbing it of some funds, making it that much further, shorter down the stretch, you know? This, is there not a better way we can fund the Gold Hill project besides, you know, robbing from the seventy-two Penny's project? Or am I off course on thinking what we're doing here?
That's the same question I had. I mean, I think Patrick's waving his finger.
Sure. So the way the, obviously the program works is, we can only spend money on Penny's projects from monies on each referendum, so we, we have the money allocated from Penny's Four to cover Highway seventy-two and four other projects, so that's already been factored in. So we were expecting to pull this money the whole time. In fact, the voters know we're pulling this money, cause we have sixty million dollars on Penny's Four to cover the remaining projects on Penny's Three. So unless the general fund or some other source of revenue can kick in the funds for the projects, then the sixty million dollars left to come from Penny's Four.
And how much is this, I don't wanna interrupt anybody, but how much, that was one of the questions I had, seventy-two highway, I mean, how much is that in Penny's Four?
The, so the, the referendum on Penny's Three had it at twelve million dollars. We've gone through a proper budgeting process and come up with about a twenty-one million dollar total cost on it.
We also added lanes to it.
Right, we expanded the scope on it as well. So that's been factored in to the sixty million dollars that's gonna be carried over on, on Penny's Four.
Well, just in the past six months, the road costs have gone up forty, forty-five percent.
So long, long as this not messing with the security of, like I say, it's been rolled over to the...
It's been, this has already been, seventy-two, Riverview, Mount Gallant, there's, you know, five fifty-seven, and Highway one sixty in Fort Mill, that's, those are the five projects being carried over to Penny's Four. So we knew, when we were budgeting for Penny's Four, hey, we're, we're gonna be pulling all those funds from those projects to complete the other projects in Penny's Three. So this isn't, you know...
We're not robbing it in any sense.
Yeah, this isn't a, a big, a big shock, cause we'd already...
It's just, if Penny's Four passes, we're not doing that.
Correct.
The problem is, if it doesn't pass, which I would certainly hope that's not much of a chance, but I, I did have a note here, it's almost like robbing Peter to pay Paul with seventy-two ship, but I get it.
Right, yes.
I mean, I get it. But then, as they pointed out, certain areas get pushed back.
Certainly, and on Penny's Four, the carryover projects are the number one priority project, so it's, if it passes, it's guaranteed that they will be funded, and we won't, we won't miss anything schedule-wise, because, A, the loan we're getting upfront from council, if y'all, I guess if y'all approve it at the next meeting. But where we are designing those projects, we will continue designing, so if Penny's Four passes, there's no lacking schedule or anything.
Any other questions?
While we're talking about that, what did we ever do with the fire department over there? I know this has nothing to do with this particular item, we were in this conversation about the Oakdale Fire Department, yeah, we never got back with that, that situation.
Is there anything new on that?
There's nothing new on that, we're not there yet, really.
Yeah. Cause we're only at the thirty percent phase, so it'll probably be another year to a year and a half before we start the right-of-way talks.
And just for clarification, I have one. The only other option really with the Penny's ordinance and the way it was written from Columbia, is if there's a shortfall, and we left seventy-two on there, is to take it out of general funds or somewhere for us to...
It would actually find another source of revenue, yeah. Yes, sir. And one thing to point out, there are about two and a half million dollars in federal funds on the Gold Hill project, so that helped offset some costs we would have had to have pulled from someplace else on, on Penny's.
Last question, how far is the improvement on seventy-two supposed to go?
It will go from nine oh one down to Rambo Road.
Not improving Rambo Road.
It will realign Rambo Road.
Oh, realign.
Is it really?
Yeah, Rambo comes in at an angle on seventy-two, it's gonna make it a little more perpendicular.
I think they're gonna do the same thing on Rawsville, too. Straighten that out, tee it up.
Yep.
Any other? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I've been sitting here, I've received a text, or saw a news thing pop up on my phone, that said that construction would begin on Gold Hill seventy-seven in June of 2018.
That's the anticipation right now.
Outstanding.
We have, in fact, the agreement you're entering into tonight will allow us to send our cost, or send a check down to Columbia, so they can obligate the funds. Currently, we're scheduled to bid it in March and open the bids in April. That's the current schedule we're on right now, so...
Any other questions for Patrick? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, committee reports, Penny's for Progress Committee, the Honorable Chairwoman, Kristy Cox.
I still like it when you say that. We met the day at four-thirty and went over several items, we got an update on the Pennies program from staff, and we discussed a right-of-way issue, and some, trying to plan ahead using our thoroughfare plan to help us with some future utility and right-of-way costs. And then we discussed the quarterly reporting of projects, and what the, basically the committee discussed whether or not there was anything else that the committee could do that was beneficial in the mission that it had set for itself, and concluded that we had done our job, and probably the next best thing was to disband the committee and allow, and encourage, not encourage, we, we've talked with staff about doing quarterly reporting, which will start November twentieth and report to the full council now that, now that all of the auditing has been done, and we have Pennies Four coming up, with the committee voted to disband the Pennies committee and to do the quarterly reporting to council. The first report is scheduled to be on November twentieth, and the, the categories of reporting for each project, we wanted cost of the approved amount in the referendum, the expected cost and budget of each project, the status of each project, and whether or not it is meeting budget for each area, and also to have a tab for utility cost and right-of-way cost to make sure that their budgeted amount does not exceed what was the amount that we set for it, and we're hopeful that the rest of the council agrees with that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I set up the Pennies committee because of all the overruns and the issues with the Pennies projects from the past, but y'all have been dealing with it now for a few years, so if as a committee you feel like you're not needed for oversight purposes anymore, I'll accept that, that's fine with me, especially if we're going to have the quarterly reports, but that's a wild tiger, we don't want to lose control of it, like has happened in the past. But next committee, Finance and Operations Committee, the Honorable Chairman, Michael Johnson.
Finance and Operations met today at five o'clock. We approved Tracy Plunkett for the York County Council on Aging. We deferred on the Old English District Commission. We approved Ruth Knup from District Five and Thomas Templeton from District Six for the Board of Assessment Appeals. We also approved Scott Patterson for an at-large on the Catawba Regional Council of Governments, and then we approved P.N. Saxena for a minority representative on Catawba Regional Council of Governments, although I did notice that he was the same person who was being sworn in tonight for a different, I just wanted to make sure he could serve in both roles, and before we swear him into the other one.
That's right, thank you, I'll look at that.
Thank you. We also had a update on the Stormwater Utility District feasibility study, as well as the Fort Mill School District presented, the, the committee a presentation on increasing their impact fees, one of, they are looking to go from twenty-five hundred dollars per unit to ten thousand dollars per unit, and while that is a considerable jump, what it will do over the next ten years is it will lower every business in the Fort Mill School District's taxes by twenty-five percent on debt service, and over fifty percent over the next fifteen years. And these are, this is an area that is basically can't attract business because the taxes are so high, and this is actually a way to, yes, there's a front-end pain, but over a ten-to-fifteen-year period, taxes will actually be lower for every house and every business in the Fort Mill School District. So it was, it was an interesting proposal, they're, they're certainly going to, and it is coming before the full council. It requires our vote, we are the gatekeeper to determine what the impact fee should be, so...
So we're their do or die on that one?
We are.
So the, you know, the, and I certainly understand the logic, and it is just on new homes, right? It's not on businesses.
Just on new homes.
Not business construction. But this goes back to the talks we've had now for a month or two about, we need a workshop to talk about the process, the integrity of the process, because a lot of things I'm seeing are kind of going into the committees, and it's almost like the integrity of the process is kind of getting disrupted. And of course, I'll talk to staff, and I'll hear heartburn about things coming before the committee, and then I'll talk to council members, and it's, hey, the staff brought it to us, we didn't ask for it, or it wasn't our suggestion. So I think it's real important for us to have that workshop in the near future before the end of the year, just to make sure the committees don't become a micro-legislative body, and then it's decided, and then it comes before the council, and then it's like, well, it's already, we already got three or four votes, so, you know, just go through the motions kind of thing, because then that harms the integrity of the democratic process. So I just want to make sure we kind of get a hold of that horse before it gets out of control, and that's why we need that workshop.
Did you speak in favor of the democratic process?
I thought that was just our workshop.
Yeah.
I didn't think you could speak in favor of anything democratic.
Well, you make an excellent point, but you might want to put in place that liberal, but not democratic. Oh, that might be the same, I don't know. But next item is council member new non-agenda comments. Any, yes, Ms. Ms. Roddy?
I think we would be remiss if we didn't wish bump Roddy good luck tomorrow in his race for mayor of Rock Hill, so good luck tomorrow.
As we wish all the candidates.
But specifically bump.
Good. So much for the democracy.
Who are the other candidates? I'm just, I'm very teasing, okay. So the other thing that I wanted to, to just ask is, I was under the impression that we were going to have something on the agenda this week as far as the list of priorities that we gave to staff, they were going to prioritize a list of things and get back to us, and we did get it, I did get an email, I think, today with those things kind of boxed off, and I wanted to find out if, if we are still moving forward with the hiring of a consultant and what the timeline looks like for that, because several of the things that were pretty high on my priority list have fallen into that box.
We're not going to interact, but...
Why not?
Staff, staff can, well, when you get to your turn, you can say what you want to say.
Based at the last meeting, it was my understanding that you wanted the list for today, so you could look at the prioritizers, priorities that the staff put the items in, and then y'all were going to take a little time to figure out if you agreed with it, and if you did, we were going to move forward, and if you didn't, whatever you did agree with, we were going to move forward with.
Okay, any, Ms. Cox?
While we're still talking about that, this is not my comment, but I, I thought that we were going to have a, the consultant was going to be, that, that's separate, I understand that's a priority, but I thought we were going to have a timeframe of when that...
It's on the agenda in executive session.
That's what we're doing, okay.
Any, any, did you have any thoughts you want?
I did, I did want to say something. For those of you who don't know, and I tried to get ahold of the county manager, but it was late notice, Mike Speltz and his wife, Crystal Speltz, they had a rather horrific incident happen September twenty-fourth, they're residents on Harmony Road in York County. He had what was apparently a ventricular, what's it called when you have AFib, it's the opposite of that on the bottom of your heart, it basically usually automatically results in death. They contacted me to reach out and say what a tremendous job that our sheriff's department did, along with our first responders, Leslie Volunteer Fire Department was out there, they had men lined up in the driveway to basically give CPR to this gentleman for forty-five minutes, standing in line, waiting to do their turn. Typically, this thing results in, in death, and it's not a, it's not a good ending, but as, as a result of their efforts, and actually the result of Comporium who hot, who employs these folks' daughter, who, daughter and son-in-law who live next door, who teach them CPRs as a result of that, he survived and miraculously has no damage to his heart, no brain damage, even though he, he did not have oxygen to the brain for a good length of time. To me, it was just, I think it's something that's going to appear on CNN, too, I think the council needed to be aware of it, and I think that we ought to have a way to recognize these folks, because they worked cooperatively to save this gentleman's life, and, and to hear, hear the story is, I'm not doing it justice, it was just, it was a beautiful way of the community working together, and I'd love to see something that this council can do to celebrate those kinds of things, and, and I'll look to you guys to, to say whether or not you're interested in doing it, and how we can, how we can maybe positively recognize them for that.
Mr. Winkler?
I saw, was disturbed to see in the paper this week that we still are not holding court in our main courtroom in the county courthouse, and that was how I learned about it, so I would like some updates from somebody on what the plan is to fix that situation and to start actually having court in the courthouse, since we spent all that money on it, so. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I'd like, if you, you know, if you got it, fine, but I just, that, that, that bothered me a little bit, that we are having people come here and then send them back out there again, so...
And you may want to call David Hamilton, too, because he's, his pulse, is that it? Mr. Williams?
Yeah, they, we, we've had trouble just scheduling some workshops here lately, and there's some stuff that we need to talk about. I know one thing that's come up, I've exchanged emails with Mr. Shanahan about, about council, council advice and, and suggestions, and whether they agree with the recommendations on some, some of them. A couple of them, they withheld recommendations last time and this time, I, you know, we don't mean to have that discussion now, but I think that we've always gotten recommendations, and I think staff recommendations are always beneficial, whether, whether or not, anyway, that's just an example of a conversation we need to have. Another one I think we need to have is that Mr. Mr. Huckabee came up here and was talking about H-tax, you know, there's, there's times, are we going, are we going after just, just generating new, uh, new, whether it generates new, unincorporated H-tax, or what, or whether it generates tourism. Both are good, there, there might be, you know, the council may decide we're only going to do one, or may decide we do the other, may decide the blend of it, but I guess the point being, we need to have a discussion at some point. Got the H-tax agenda this meeting and there, they're talking about redoing that application, and they're also considering some, so they're doing, doing stuff that we have not, as a council, had discussions on. The point about it being six forty-five is, we could have had some of these discussions tonight, and we put them on the agenda, and when, and since we're already scheduled here, so I guess that's what I would, I'm, I'm hoping that in the future, you know, we can get some of this stuff talked about, but also, you know, we've got a meeting that, that's going to be like this, that we, we go ahead and take advantage of this time. Now, I say that, now we're probably in executive session for two hours, but, but that's the point that I wanted to make, but...
Yeah, maybe that needs to be an agenda item on the next H-tax line discussion. Anybody else? Do we have a motion on the executive session? Oh, I'm sorry, there was no citizen concern, and nobody signed up for that.
Yes, yes, sir, I move we go into executive session to discuss a contractual matter relating to the family court Phase Two construction award and protest and proposed resolution settlement, another contractual matter regarding discussion of administration of the Veterans Park grant award, and to receive legal advice to get a landfill groundwater update, zoning code update, and potential association of council for ALC matter.
Second. Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We'll be back by seven at the latest. Okay, county council is now back in session, we have one action item.
Yes, sir, I move that we authorize, propose the settlement agreement with Hogan as discussed in executive session.
Second.